I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's nice to see a full room of people here. Give me hell. So feel free. Uh, roll call. Tim.
Here.
Troy.
Here.
Judy.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Police chief.
Yes, sir.
Uh, clerk door.
Here.
Mayor.
Mayor is far away here. We've got, uh, two excused absences. Uh, Julie was excused and the clerks excused. And is David here?
Yeah.
Is he?
Did anybody, did he call anybody in for an excuse?
She put him on the list.
Did she? I didn't. They need to start calling me, so I. I guess we'll try once more. Okay, public comments. Uh, Chris has some things on the water and he needs to tell us something about.
I've been in correspondence with Ms. Kim Parker. She is the director of D and P about, um, the books and what we've done. Uh, she told me that Mr. Ben Frank is the facility administrator for the town. Uh, Matt Bellows was cool for him because he wasn't doing anything for the town of Madison. Um, in order for me to be able to do anything as far as the water and sewer from the big reef that you guys talked about last night, David has to go in and designate me as an operator for the town, which he has not done that yet. I've asked him a couple of times to do it. I have been working with the mayor trying to figure something out on that too, and I will open a little bit more the books that I need. Uh, for the water treatment would be a hundred dollars and for the wastewater treatment volume one would be a hundred dollars. Um, these things can be bought through her. And I've been corresponding back and forth with her and, uh, people that she was asked for. And I say now I'm just waiting for the town to do the side of David.
Now, now, what I understand is and if I'm not mistaken, I think David is operator in training.
All she told me was that David was marked as a facility administrator because Mike wasn't doing anything for the town or the manager since he was doing stuff recently. But he was the facility administrator for management at one point and then David called in to try to get his operator license. She said, oh, well, Mike hasn't done anything. Please do this. So she just made Mike the facility administrator for the town because, or she made David the facility administrator for the town because no one was doing anything in that part.
Right, okay. Uh, let me look him to what, uh, when I have my license, I have to be them and an operator in training first and then pass the test and then went on from there.
Well, she also told me a little bit that I had to be employed with the town, which that's just a small technicality. Um, I believe that I ordered when I gave my mosquito spray license to the town, I believe I ordered a paid employee of the town per se, so that part is all taken care of. And then they needed some records from when I worked with the town when I was fresh out of school. She said that the stuff I did underneath Kenny Hall, where he had his operator license, would be just fine. I just have to have that information sent in with, from the town, with a letterhead from the town. So that's all being cared of. Now I'm just waiting on David to designate you as an operator or operator training.
Yeah.
And then you get the books. I get to get the test and be done with it. And then the town will have
an operator.
An operator in front of staff.
Right. Very sweet that. And, uh, we'll try to get with Ms. Parks and see if we can just let you in under David as operator in training until you pass the test and then you should have about enough hours to go ahead and get your regular license. So we'll, I'll try to get that done Monday.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask for clarification please, or you are or are not an employee near the town at this point that you're speaking of?
Um, I re- I believe that I am. Is that correct?
He, he is because he's her backup mosquito sprayer.
Perfect, thank you.
Can I ask something? If he does get hired, now, does he plan on staying in this town for a long time or if something comes along better, are you gonna quit us?
No, I'm, 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 I'm done moving around. I've, I've moved around for the past fourteen years. I'm done. I'm ready to settle down.
Because if we go through all this and then something comes better and he leaves us, we still have time.
That's a chance we take with any of them.
Well, I can ask, getting better?
Yeah, I mean, never say never, but my plans are to be here for a good long while. I miss, I miss being in Wyoming and I miss, you know, the small town and my fam- almost all of my family is in this area, so.
Bugs.
I have a question. Um, when my husband first started doing mosquito spraying, they said that it could not be an employee. He is under contract. He's not a town employee. He's under a contract. Is that the same thing or I'm just asking?
Yeah, no. You, you, to, yeah. There, there's a fine line here.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to explain it. If, if you're going to be a contractor, you've got to furnish all your own equipment.
Okay.
So he slash employee part contractor.
Oh, okay. I don't know, cause when Tim hired him, he said he had to be under contract, so.
Yeah, we, you, the definition of a contractor, you've got to have, have him utilize your own equipment doing work.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, just going back to our, um, past nine minutes, uh, there is a huge help that we have to oversee. Even though, uh, Chris has been hired on as the town's backup mosquito sprayer, it still has not been passed through the council, so we still need to do that.
We'll go ahead and do that. So amend the agenda to put that on. Any other public comments?
Are you gonna be doing some spraying stuff? Cause mosquito sprays are getting bad again.
Currently working on that. Um, I neglected on this part to inform the mayor that the spray already is down. It was a starter issue, but I do have a part replaced. I'm planning on doing that after the meeting and get that done tomorrow.
Anything else?
Um, I have a quick question. It's, it's not really related to this, but, um, I have noticed that Madison doesn't really have an online presence um, for like where people can go and see our ordinances or go and just, um, find some information about the town when they eat here. Um, and I was wondering if there was ever gonna be a, like a talk about that, cause that would be really super convenient.
We, we've talked about it. It's a good idea to put our ordinances online. Uh, we'll work on that to try to find somebody to be able to, but I don't know how, uh.
Well, um, I do know how if, uh, I mean, obviously it's not something for now, but you know, something to consider. Um, and I do want to do that, cause I don't do anything mostly during the day. I have tons of free time and I would not mind helping the town out with anything.
Plus, let, we'll, we'll get, get something put together and, uh, we appreciate each other helping. And we'll, we'll get her done.
So I'm gonna grab your first name. I know you're married to Chris.
See ya.
Thank you.
T H E A.
And what day is it?
Okay, uh.
Yes, Donald.
Carleen Brown couldn't be here tonight, but she asked me to relay some information. She said she seen animals in the park. We sitting at, sitting at picnic table. There's, there's no animals in the park whatsoever unless it is a
Service dog.
Service dog. So no animals, no sheep, no goats, no chickens, no dogs, no nothing. And we will enforce that. There will be fines. And I have no mayor's comments. Uh, approval of amendments for July twenty of twenty twenty-three?
I'd like to amend the agenda, Mr. Mayor, for me.
She didn't put that in here, did she?
Um, you can do it under approval of the agenda, but your first step is approving of the amendments.
No. Okay, do I have motion to approve the amendments of August number twenty-three?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, motion carries. Approval of the agenda. You wanted to
amend it. What was we just saying? We was gonna amend it.
Uh, to, to put Chris in.
Oh, to put Chris in as, as.
Backup sprayer. And let's, let's put that under the first thing under new business.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I've got tonight.
You guys, we good? Yeah. Do I have motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Joint Powers Board, Dennis, what's going on, anything?
Okay, they finished, uh, I, three days ago, cut it and got it in there and it's all backfilled and they're gonna test it till the twenty-first and we make sure we don't have any more leaks. And we'll go from there.
Okay.
But, uh, everything went good and they found it, so.
Now, when, when they get that done, it would be greatly appreciated whoever the contractor was.
That was just contractor.
Or whoever does it to smooth that up and make that look nice and pretty down there.
But given, given thirty days for it.
Right, right. Appreciate that.
We've also been asked to put some, uh, human growth.
Oh, good. Oh, okay. Yeah.
And outside of that, that's, uh, everything looking good for.
Okay, thanks, Dennis. I wanna do that. Yeah, I can't stand that too much. Clerk Cracer, she's not here. Maintenance is not here. Janet, are you here?
Well, you know.
Physically, but I'm mentally.
Is that in your record?
No, man, please, stick with that from the record.
Okay, so. It's not my boss.
Him? Oh, I thought it was BJ.
Okay, so you guys have my report about sort of the citations that are written and payments that have come in. Um, court is next Friday, the twenty-second. Uh, it's starting at eight-thirty instead of nine, um, because last month we just had so many people calling in and so we wanted to sort of mediate that a little bit. It's been going on forever. Um, there is one bench trial scheduled, but it looks like she's gonna do a deferral and there's a whole bunch of calls in so far and there will be more calls, I'm sure, during the week next week. Um, let's see, uh, PJ and I submitted the cops' performance report at the end of August. Um, let's see, just a reminder, the court for November is rescheduled for Tuesday the fourteenth. So, um, we'll just need to have town hall closed for that morning during court. Uh, we scheduled the highway cleanup. I didn't know BJ was gonna be here, so I put it on my, highway cleanup for the police department on Saturday, October fourteenth. And then after this one, we'll be able to put Madison P on a sign when you come into town, the, not the highway sign. So that would be cool. I know, wouldn't that be great? And, and, um.
Regardless, BJ, that's true.
Uh, we're gonna do a Halloween party for the community at the end of October. Uh, we'll announce the date later once we sort of figure out who's doing what and what other towns or entities are doing parties, but that's been a fact from past years. So we'll probably do the same kind of games and talk to wherever she is. There she is. The game, the game mistress over there. Couldn't, couldn't spider on the sidewalk. That was a huge hit last year and so I think we'll have, you know, games for the kids and it'll be a lot of fun. Um, what else? Oh, in your packet, you also got the, the comparison from year to year. And then what I did, I did another one, but I kind of geeked out this afternoon before I left. So I did another one that you don't have, cause it was just too late to get it in. Um, it's, I just took out like September through December from past years, so we could have a, a, you know, more accurate comparison of year to year. And even with those extra months added in, we're still way ahead um, of previous years and last year for citations and total bond and also total payments coming in. But when you take out those other, the September through December months, um, we're actually thirty-five percent ahead of citation, citation payments from last year. So we're doing really well for, for all of that. And that's through, that's through, um, September twelfth, so that's through Tuesday, payments through Tuesday. And then going forward, like from today until, or from yesterday through next Friday, we get a lot more payments because people pay before the court. Anyway, that's that.
Thank you. BJ. I know you're back there. I haven't seen you.
I'm back here. I'm a good-looking bald guy.
What?
So I know.
I was here.
Are, are you absent?
My football game, my boys' football game got over. They won thirty-four nothing, so we're good. Go Braves, come off. Yeah. Hopefully Wyoming beats Texas this weekend, so. But COVID says no. Yeah, it's called my thunder October fourteenth, so we have, we do the highway cleanup day that day. Price start at ten. So whoever wants to join us that day, feel free to help us out. We have to go from, basically from the intersection of US twenty, two miles out. Uh, last year we had a good turnout and we got a lot of trash and we had a prize. Jan actually had a prize for whoever found the coolest thing, which I don't remember what that was.
I don't remember what it was either.
But it was cool and she gave a prize, so. If you want to help out, give a prize, buy something cool there. Feel free to help us out.
Buy something weird.
Yeah. Um, I told you last time we got approved by the DEA to get train aids for a canine. Um, that's still going good. We just did an order form to, to get those train aids. Hopefully they'll be here shortly, so Newman and Ru can start, you know, training on their own here, not have to have other people supply their training aids. Um, traffic's still up pretty good, so like I said, we'll just gotta be careful walking across the street and pulling out, cause there's still people, still people coming pretty quick and Yellowstone's still full, so. Um, we just installed the ring system into the, um, into the evidence room and the, my office. They have cameras in there now per the DEA request, cause they have to have, um, security for that. And there's also door and window security, um, monitors of people in and out of that room, so just be aware of that. Um, Ral's good with the, with the officers. Everything's good our way, so no complaints.
You, you say you need tires on the two-deep petrol?
Yeah, both explorers.
Are we, are, are, are they needed right now?
It would be nice to get it before, before winter time. They're starting to get pretty thin. Um, they can probably last, like I said, a couple of months. Once the snow flies, it'd be nice to have new tires on there.
It's been a moment.
If people, if people quit driving through town like they're not supposed to, then we would have to drive crazy after them.
BJ gave me an estimate. I compared it with a couple of different places. His estimate was the lowest. Uh, I'll go ahead and sign your permission to go ahead and do it.
Okay, and we do get a purchase spot or discount through, um, not, not the, the companies putting them on, but like Cooper, whoever's gonna, you know, buy the tires, so it's, it's a pretty good deal.
So go ahead and get more.
Okay, and then also, I want to sign my, um, P O on the charger needs front, front struts because it's knocking and probably from jumping the curb here chasing people and going down dirt roads. So it'd be nice if we could get that approved too.
Get safety issue.
I'll hang up on that cleanup, but we're switching in this time. The guys that started out there gets to start down here.
I, I will be, I'll be in charge of that. I will make assignments to that tomorrow. Was it bad out there or what?
It was not.
The oldest person would you get?
It was, it was just so hot and we didn't have waste of carried water and.
Hopefully in October, it'll be cooler then, so.
But maybe if you have somebody actually come and check on the people down.
They're driving up and down with water?
Maybe that'll be my job. The supervisor's driving, I get. Sitting out there, out about. I will volunteer. The oldest person who shows up for that detail will be the water person. Thank you.
Just drive up and dump the air conditioning out of the car. Okay. Bill approval. Has everybody had a chance to go over the bills?
I went over them on a sheet of paper here.
Do I have a motion to pay bills? Or do you have a question? No. Do I have a motion to pay bills?
I have a motion to have bills paid.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, new business. Melissa Cook.
So my name is Melissa Cook and I am the exchange educator, extension educator for the University of Wyoming. If you know where the old Big Horn REA building is, that's where my office is. And I'm here to meet you and to let you know what's going on as far as my position. So I have to tell you though, I've never been to a council meeting. I had so many people laughing and so many smiles. I feel like I stepped into Mayberry.
Feel sweet.
You should quit your council meeting now here for advertising and people are more ready. So, and your, um, your story about who finds the best thing on the side of the road reminds me of, I spent twenty years in Bush, Alaska as a teacher and we used to comp, beach, beach comp. And most of it was track, but every time I found a gem out there in the beach, it was awesome. So. Anyway, so I'm here to let you know that I'm collecting data on the county so that I can do an needs assessment and about programming. And that programming will be tailored to whatever it is that the county needs. So the first thing that I did, I'm an E M T out of Burlington. I'm a former school teacher and district administrator out of Alaska. And so the fire board asked me to do an E M T class and so I'm coordinating an E M T class. I had hoped to make that E M T class free and when that E M T class was going to be free, there were people in Madison that are interested in taking it. And then I was told the university said I can't compete against, uh, Northwest and they offer a class. So now Northwest is doing the class, but I'm helping them coordinate it. Becky Mills out of the town district will be teaching it. It's going to run between, because we're looking for farmers and ranchers, it's going to run between beet season and cabbie season, so November fourteenth to February seventeenth. In an effort to get volunteers in local communities like yours. Burlington's hurting for E M Ts, Franny's hurting for E M Ts. And you have three people in your community who are interested in becoming E M Ts. But when my class went from the University of Wyoming free to Northwest thousand dollars, your number of people who are willing to attend the class went from three to zero. So, um, because we have finances, I mean, it's hard to, you know, these days. So I would encourage the town council to think about, can you provide scholarship for one, two or three people? And the reason you want that is because your neighbor can save your life. And having somebody here in your golden hour, so you don't have to wait for, uh, an ambulance to get here or possibly the police. Can you guys call a helicopter?
We can.
We can.
Yeah. So you're fortunate that you have police in your community to be able to do that. But having an E M T on scene to be able to call helicopters is a nice thing. Um, I can tell you, I have saved needed lives as an E M T. I don't ride on an ambulance, but I, I am E M T and I do provide services to my neighbors. So, um, some of the things that I do for training is board training. So if you didn't get your board training yet, we will be doing two more board trainings this winter and spring. So we'll put those dates out soon. All boards that have money from the county have to have board training. If you deal with money or supervise with money.
They've all been through.
They've all been through it? Oh, good. So if you get a new member of the board that needs that in the future, give me a call.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's see. I can help you with the safe landing. I can test your gauges if you do canning. You know, anybody that does canning, those gauges are coming out at about eighty percent are reading inaccurate, which means you can either get food poisoning or have an explosion or a risk of an explosion if it's not accurate. So just come into my office or give me a call and I'll come do, you know, a couple of hour session here and people can bring in their canners and we'll test, just leave the lid for the gauge. Uh, I am also a facilitator and one of the things that I'm going to do as my job is to depict Wyoming life on YouTube as a community vitality and health specialist. So it won't be just me, it will be the others in the state. There are five more of us that will be putting out videos. Uh, I currently have a YouTube channel, so I have experience in doing that and, um, hopefully we'll be able to record trainings that if you had missed, you didn't know were happening, you would be able to just sign onto YouTube and see those trainings. And then, um, in this area of the county, they are doing with Three Rivers, they're doing that needs, that health needs assessments. So if you haven't completed that, this is the reason why you want to. It's short, it takes five minutes to do and the data that we're gonna get from that will help my office determine programming. So it's not just the medical facility that will be able to use that data. Many different offices will, so please sign up for that. I mailed a, uh, flyer that has a little picture of a QR code or you can just look up Three Rivers online and it's just fast. And then, um, I wanted to share an interesting thing, uh, that I learned in my recent training. I am part of a group that's nationwide with extension educators and they are doing a big push for extension educators to help prepare for the big change coming forward. And so I, I asked today, what's this big sixty percent change? Because they're saying that in twenty thirty, sixty percent of the jobs that people are showing up for are not jobs that exist today. So my question to them was, does that mean that the baby boomers have all reached, you know, the nursing home or the hospice? And so there's more jobs in that industry? Is that what you're talking about, jobs that don't exist? Or are you talking about, like, my husband was a tech director, but when we were in college, they'd never heard of a tech director? So is that what you're talking about? And they said it's the tech director scenario. And so we're trying to get prepared for jobs that don't exist. So keep your eyes and ears open as far as which changes are coming because that's only, that's sixty percent of all jobs that people are showing up for. Those are the kind of cool things I need to learn in my job. So you know where I'm at. I'm in the old utility building. If you have any questions, if you have any data, if you want to share with me what you love about your community or don't love about your community, what you think the county could do to help you improve your community. I'm trying to do a needs assessment as well to, uh, you know, make the Big Horn Basin a better spot. But I have to say, you guys seem pretty happy already. I've never seen a happier group of people at town council making my lawsuit or not done yet. It's not done yet.
It's a good day.
I am flying out for last week morning, so I have to leave, but thank you for letting me have time on your agenda.
You're welcome.
I need some time tonight to tell you about my job.
Thank you very much. Liquor license. Highway law. Barley Stanford. Did, did you, I'm, I don't know what the clerk's done on this. Have you applied for the liquor license or?
I just did everything that's changed.
Okay. So, uh, I guess when she gets advertised and then we'll, or do we need code on that? Then we'll, or do we need code on that? They changed many different things uh on that.
I don't know, we still like to have three reasons on liquor license like we used to.
I think, I think, I, I thought they moved it to two. You would know, that's going to your major.
I should know, but they've changed so much.
I know.
See, you're the change on that.
So, what, what I would suggest, so we can get this moving, is go ahead and approve. Them getting the liquor license. And going, just so they, just so you go through the right procedures, what the clerk says. And that way, we won't have to have a special meeting and we won't slow you down on getting it. So, do I have a motion to grant uh Mr. Sanford a liquor license for the highway bar?
I would so move on that and make that motion to approve the liquor license.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just so everybody knows, the bar is sold to Mr. Sanford. In fact, he seemed close on it today, right?
Yep, yep. Yes, food there, sorry.
Keys in hand.
I'll know Monday.
Okay, moving on, time clock. We've got time clocks in here, we've got time clocks down at the shop. They're, right now they're currently using, where they can call in and clock in on the computer. That's, that's fine. But from now on, if, if the council will approve it. Everybody, I want everybody to punch in and punch out. Is that some, any discussion from the council?
Basically what it, what that's for is, it's hard for the council to, to see what's going on. With the time clock, they're maybe going to pay off the time. This is not what it's for, it's for the council to know days, hours, whatever we're doing, because we've got no clue. Uh, because we can't get on the computer to look at the, the timesheet, so. So anyhow, uh. I would go ahead and make a motion that we, we pass that.
Hang on a second, uh Janet was first.
Can, can somebody fix the time clock so it shows the right time?
We'll get it fixed.
And also, so if I'm doing that, I'm going to adjust my, I'm going to punch in when I come in. And then, I'll adjust my time on the time, on the computer time clock, because that's what I get paid off of, right?
Yeah, yes.
To reflect that.
Right.
What happens if we forget?
Whatever, you forget to put your pants on in the morning, you'll remember to do that, right?
Well, no, I mean, it's a legitimate question.
If, if you forget, the second you forget, or the second, the second you remember that you forgot, go write it in. Uh, if it happens too much, then you'll have to write it in and get it approved.
Just forget to write the paycheck.
But, but you're going to use the online system still to pay us, is that right?
The online system is what's going to pay you.
Okay.
We just need to know, we can't get on the computer and luck and see what the hours are, what we're working. So every once in a while, we like to luck and see who's doing what, when, where. And we don't have the ability to do that and using the time clocks. I can come in and see what's going on. B J, did you have something?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that, I mean, my guys, obviously law enforcement's on a Monday through Friday, eight to five, clock in, clock out type of theme. Um, when my guys come on duty, um, they clock in on their phone and then they drive here. During that time, they can encounter several things, like, I mean, I stop out for debris on the highway. I stopped out for, there's motorists that need to be assisted. I stopped out, um, the back of other, like if there's a deputy on his traffic stop, if there's a trooper on the traffic stop.
Yeah.
Um, I mean deputy or officer Newman just the other day clocked in, came by emblem and got involved in high speed chase with the county.
Did he catch him?
They did catch him. Yeah, they did catch him, yeah. And he was involved in that. Yesterday he went home, as he's going through basin, there was a frantic nine one one call that came in. And he responded there and helped out the, the chief of police over there. So I just want to make sure that when, when we, that when we clock in on our phones, when we clock in through dispatch, that we are at work. Because if I was to stop out and help somebody and I got hurt or killed, I want to make sure I'm covered doing that.
Right, our, uh. If you would still, you're going to be paid, your time starts and quits when you call in and to, to go to work and quit. But I still like to see you clock in here when you get here and when you leave. That way, when people ask me how many hours are our police department putting in in town. I can luck and I can say that, you know, I'd say ten, whatever.
And then what about like trainings? So if we go to training for a week, how are we going to?
If you go to training, just, just write down that you were in training on a piece of paper, term of the year.
And then, the other issue is with like Lieutenant Neil, I mean obviously he does a bunch of stuff at home. He does grand stuff at home, he does computer stuff at home, watches videos at home, and how's he supposed to clock in and out when he's?
He'll be excused from it, there's no way he can. He's, he's the only one excuse the rest of us when we go to work. And I'm not, I didn't realize when you guys go to work, it's maybe an hour and a half before you can clock in or an hour, whatever. Just come in and clock in and when you leave, clock out. If, if it just gives us a way of, of knowing.
If people have questions about the police department, they should come talk to the police department. I'll tell them how many hours they were.
It's true.
I mean, I'm the chief, so I, I mean, why are they not coming to me and asking me questions like that?
I would, I, you know, if I'm going to make one department, I gotta go with all or none.
Okay, like I said, the police department's totally different than a normal, normal job, so.
Still controlled by this board.
That's, that's true.
So, and to, to help us help you by doing this, uh, it will help us.
Okay.
And nobody's in trouble, it's just something where we know what's going on and we, when we sign your paycheck, uh, we can say, yeah. We saw that. We, we don't got the ability to go on the computer and see every time when you punch in and punch out without going through the clerk and. So we're going to do the time clock. But you're still getting paid.
Yeah, I mean, we're on salary, so we're going to be paid no matter what we do, clock it for a minute, clock it for an hour, so just.
Yeah.
So I don't know why it's a, an issue right now, but it's, we've been doing, we've been, that's something we've ever had and everything's totally good, I don't know why we need to.
We, we just.
Manage hours now.
And another thing that it's going to help is winter hours. If we know what you're doing, how many hours you put in, what you're doing, how many you're picking up, as winter gets slower, we can decrease your hours. But as, as December gets nearer, as you know, then we expect you to put in more hours and work less hours in the, the winter.
Well, our guys are on salary, which they're quite a few here for forty hours, but we can't make them work more hours because that's against the law.
Well, we're, we're, we're going with the time clock for now. And we've, we've got to get your, your contracts ready and then that would be the time to dispute anything.
Okay. Fair enough.
So, any more discussion on the time clocks? Ken made a motion to approve the time clock you see. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. All cleanups, Troy. Any thoughts?
I agree.
Yes.
I know, but are we got money to pay for?
Well, that's, that's the biggest million dollar question right now, with everything that's going on with that audit and everything. You know what it costs? I think it was two thousand dollars uh for the dumpsters and hauling them off, right?
It was twenty-four last time I did it.
Twenty-four hundred.
That's just one dumpster, right, or?
Yep, that was just the one out here. That was it. When we only had the one and they came, but they, the first year they didn't come and empty it, but the second year they came and emptied it. But bringing it and taking it out was twenty-four hundred dollars.
For one dumpster?
Yep. That's, that should be the total price though, because it's five hundred dollars. When I was setting it all up, it was five hundred dollars for the dumpster, for each dumpster.
Right.
And it was, I don't remember how much for the mileage, and then it was like three or four dollars a day, and then the mileage back. And then they would charge out whatever the weight was at the end.
Yeah, you know, my, my biggest concern right now is, is everybody knows we're going through a massive audit right now, and we don't know what's going to happen at the end of that. And right now, it's been really tough to straighten things out and pay the bills, so I don't know. If it's wise to go spending that kind of money right now or not, guys.
I'm against it. I don't think we need it right now. We've got too many other fire, or items in the fire right now besides that.
And I think, once we go back to it, I think if we do it once a year, uh. I think that would be fine, because as, as you all know, these small towns bleed really bad because we don't have a lot of money. So, we've got to watch our P S and Qs on everything.
I thought that's what the community fund was for, so how would you do those things?
Being used for other things right now to straighten up the mess of everything. Fire hydrants, that's one of them.
We've got too many other things.
Yeah, it's just, uh, uh. On the, on the uh, community fund, basically, we're going to have to dig into that to pay our bills. That's just the bottom line of the whole thing. And we haven't spent any money this year either, so.
When, when we come in here, for the past year or two back, we're still paying bills that haven't been paid from a long time ago. We just paid one the other day for five thousand dollars that we didn't know we owed. So we're still getting them coming in, and until we get all of these surprise bills out the way, we can't afford it, you know?
Does the council have a plan to repay into the foodie fund? Because if you guys are borrowing from it?
We're not, we're not borrowing from it. The community fund can be used for whatever we deem necessary. And right now, what we're deemed unnecessary is keeping the town above water. There's, there's, there's only, there's only one thing that we can't spend out of the community fund, and that is the thousand dollars. That P P N L pays for uh, community gatherings. We've got, we can't use, that, we can only use that for that purpose. But the rest of it is the town's discretion, and right now, it's our discretion to keep us above water.
So what's the balance of that, community fund?
Did you, did you get a summary there?
It doesn't say the total, it doesn't say the balance, it just says what we spent out of it.
Oh, there shouldn't be.
Where it says, and it says that the loan for the sewer is going to be back.
The profit's a loss, it's in here somewhere.
Just the bill thing that we got out here, yeah, we don't have the same stuff we have, so. So it just shows what it's spent out of the community fund, but it doesn't show a balance of what the community fund is.
All right.
Because there was sixty thousand in it last year, last month.
Right.
They agreed to take twenty thousand.
Yeah, they did. It says to be paid back.
Community fund shows right now seventy-eight thousand, three ninety-seven.
Seventy-eight thousand. And that's, was it twenty thousand for the sewer loan?
You're, you're on a different one, I've got seventy thousand.
So how can we not afford a few dumpsters then?
Because we haven't paid for the. The, the, the money that was taken out for the sewer is not reflected on this. The hydrants are not done yet, uh. There's, there's many things that, that have got to be done before we can do something like that.
See, the other thing you've got to think about, uh, and I'm talking to all the public, is. Uh, when we lost that school, we lost a major portion of our money that comes into the enterprise. And, you know, we've got, uh, we've got a lot of people uh in town. And we're not going to talk about any of that, but there's a lot of people in town that's big time behind. On water, sewer. So, right now, we did, we, we've got to borrow money this month from the community fund, because that's the only thing we can borrow from. There's no other way to get any money, but to pay our bills this month, we're, we're short because of all that. So, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that, uh, you know, if we don't get a handle on this somehow, we're going to be a non-incorporated town, which is all over. That's the last thing we want to have happen. So when this audit's done, I'm sure that the state auditors are going to come back and they're going to say, guys, the enterprise has got to be self-sufficient. And when they come back and say that, they're going to, we're going to say, well, how do you make it self-sufficient? You all know what they're going to tell us, right? You got to get your bills up to where you can make your enterprise self-sufficient, so. You know, but this has been coming on a long time, it ain't just happened uh since January, so. But that's part of the reason, Barb, is we, until we get all this taken care of, I mean, it's, we're having to spend.
Back to her original question, what funds the community fund? What builds that backup?
That was from our dis, disbursements?
Deferrals.
Deferrals. From ticket.
Actually, yeah, what it is, is it's, um. People who, uh, for various reasons, get, it's a deferral program that Jerry Williams, the town attorney, has set up. And people pay a s, a set amount, it's greater than what their fine would be. And it's a, it's an administrative fee. And they do that, they write a letter, they, um, they have to go to online traffic school. And then, um, after sixty or ninety days, it depends on, that's up to Jerry's discretion. Then what happens is, B J checks their, they can't have any uh moving violations, because it is a, it's an official deferral program, right? So they can't have any moving violations, so B J checks that, and then, and then their ticket gets dismissed if they don't have any. So that's the, that's how that program works, and that's where the money comes from.
That's for local Wyoming people, that's not the opposite.
Anybody, anybody.
Anybody. And it's such a Jerry's discretion, and they can't, and they can't, you know, he doesn't give deferrals to people who are, you know, rude or abusive to the officers, things like that, so, you know, there are. There are a few stipulations.
Okay, uh, let's, let's bring this back to the council, and Troy, what do you have any thoughts on it? We were on town cleanup.
Also, I can see it coming, a business one here, we don't tell, so it's financial.
Right.
You know, the question was just actually about if we were.
Right. And, and I, we, we've had it once this year, I think we can probably do it again in the spring. But until we get the audit over, uh, I don't think we're going to be spending any money unnecessarily. So, do I have a motion to do the town cleanup? Due to lack of motion, motion fails. That's the easy way out. You don't have a motion, you can't do it. Anyway. Sit, sit there and think about it.
I know what you're saying, I'm just trying to think of a correct phrase for this.
Due to the lack of a second, motion fails. Just make it up to you. Uh, where do we go? All cleanups, okay? Go, scoring forward with making. Uh, where do we go? Ball cleanups, okay. Goes going forward with making. Oh. Didn't we already do that? Chris, I'm sorry. Uh, we need to, to have a motion to put Chris on as backup mosquito sprayer.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'm gonna walk to it.
abstain.
All those in favor? All those abstaining, motion passes. Uh, did you get your driver's license and all the information yet, Chris?
I just got my, why don't we try to license back here? I have to give her my new stuff, and she has my Georgia one.
Uh, when you get some time, come on over and uh, fill out the proper papers.
I think I have most of it done. She just needs the last little bit. And also, my actual license has come in too, so.
Okay, and, yeah, give her a copy of that. Okay.
Want your license?
Goes going forward with making ordinance.
Okay, you all should have got this ordinance today. Uh, I think there's a public deal out.
You want a chair?
No, that's fine.
Sure?
Yes, I am.
You sure? I might have to get you that one.
Can we, can we, can we see that you guys have the same copy we have? Do we know?
You do.
It is. Okay. Well, I just wanna make sure nothing gets thrown under the radar.
Well, what we're gonna do is, is there's still a little work to be done on this, but it's nothing major. Uh, we just wanted to get a, a draft together. Uh, it's drafted up pretty well, I think. So, uh, if you guys have all read it, I'd go ahead and then make a motion to accept a third reading.
Do I have a second? Any, yeah, if you have some discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Most in here.
So, is that the first or second?
First.
Because we can't hear you back here.
Okay, move forward. There's space right up here for the hearing in there.
Be good, please. I think I remember them. All you said. Um, curious about some of these, though.
Well, uh, is, is this the time to talk? Do you wanna talk about it, or should we go to council comments? Okay, we'll bring this up in public comments.
Okay.
Police contract for Officer Muma and Officer Coleman.
Mr. Mayor, if you may, uh, I would like to have uh, BJ and Mr. Coleman to join us in executive session sometime in our annual session.
Okay, and that's the last, last thing on the ballot, so we'll skip over that until then. Uh, excess equipment for sale. I, I, I've got the list, but we need to figure out how we wanna do it. Do we wanna put uh, minimum bids on it? Uh, do we wanna put it on mandatory happenings? Uh, where do we wanna have to go? How do we wanna proceed? Not, not right here, but I can, I can just darn near name everything. We've got a mosquito sprayer, a generator, a water pump, uh, air compressor. We've got two vehicles, and I think that's about.
We could finish more.
Finish more, yeah, down at the sewer yard. And that's, that's all the stuff we have.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something here. I think what we oughta do on that excess equipment, because we're coming into fall. We don't know what kind of winter we're gonna have, so if we got rid of the pickup and smoke lounge we needed this winter, uh, I think we're gonna get better pricing out of this stuff in the spring and the fall, going into fall and winter right now.
And it doesn't make sense, especially with finishing off.
Yeah.
And we may as well do it all at once instead of piece, meanwhile.
Yeah.
Uh, do you wanna table essential spray?
Yeah, I can mostly table essential spray.
Do I have a second?
I got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Update on hydrants. I'll let you get that one, Ken.
Basically, everything's operable under the one by Randy Brown's, and uh, Ferguson will be bringing that hydrant in next week. And Todd said no, a construction called, and I want to know when they're gonna do that hydrant, when that hydrant's in.
For us that don't know, something brown, where's that one located so that we're aware?
That's right across from the park.
Okay, thank you.
So, is that one that our defense did?
No, everything, there, there, there was uh, one leaked, and, and that was it. Uh, yes, it was, Barb. Yes, it was. It was this one right here that was the only one that leaked.
On the highway.
The one on the highways leaking a little bit?
Yeah, that's how it happened about that long.
Mm-hmm. And so the one over at Travis's was leaking everywhere too.
That's the one that you said we could.
I know, but I'm just saying, he said only one item was ever leaking, but we've just had three now, so.
So anyhow, we should have that all taken care of next week sometime.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, we still are, time change on the fire protection aspect, right?
As far as I know, I don't know. We'll, we'll have to go meet with them, because there's, there's a lot of things that I wanna bring up with them that they should know.
Well, on that, the reason why I'm asking is, um, I, I can't really, you know, set their hands and say, well, you know, we should do this, but I really don't think that uh, the town itself should be doing unnecessary burn, a fire protection.
Absolutely. I, I second that. I think it's close to the burn pile as I do.
Okay, we got a motion, we ran a second to the.
Very funny. Her is so funny.
Burning, unnecessary burning. I mean, if a homeowner chooses to burn, that, that's on that, but uh, I really don't think our burn pile down at the shop needs to be burned, especially without fire protection. That's the reason.
Dave already said he was not gonna burn that.
It was burning yesterday.
I love this.
Oh, yeah.
It had a smoldering. He was.
He said he was gonna burn it.
Yeah, well, I forgot.
I wasn't here, so it stinks. When is the fire meeting that we can plan to go to that we need to be at?
They've had their board meeting.
No, next Tuesday at six thirty.
Next Tuesday. We'll get on the agenda. We'll, we'll call Joel first, Shirley.
Okay, moving on, uh, mayor comments. The only thing I wanna say right now is we are gonna be enforcing the water uh, the way our ordinance says. If you're late, you're off. No excuses. We've gotta pay our bills. And if the only way to pay our bills is to collect the money, then that's what we're gonna have to do.
Okay, but what is late considered late? At, one day past, or what's considered late?
You, you've got fifteen days in, and also be sent out, and then there's seven after that. It's gotta be paid within, so you've basically got three weeks. Three weeks. The week before the new bill comes out.
Is it our, is this be charging interest on any of those?
You know, I don't, I don't know. I guess that's a good question. We need to look into it. Oh, and, and one other thing, the.
What?
Left property has been picked up for taxes. They picked it up September twenty-fifth. So, we're gonna have to figure out if they want water turned on down there, or what they want. Sandy Love. Sandy Love, her, her property has been sold for tax.
Oh, yeah?
They, they take it over to the, like, September twenty-fifth. And if they want water, we've gotta figure it out. There's a lot of five thousand dollars back that we're supposed to charge. So, that's something we need to think about before somebody comes in. Okay, that's all of, all the comments I have. Uh, let's, let's, let's break maybe in order, please. Uh, public comments. Okay, any other public comments? Barbara?
Okay, so I was looking over what you guys have written for uh, the ordinance for the goats. Um, as far as the placement of where the goats are at right now, I will need to change that or add another property, because they stay at two different properties. They'll eat here, eat there, blah, blah, blah. Um, but as far as anybody coming and uh, inspecting, I would like to know what that means, and what that entails.
It's before we will enter, however it's, we're gonna get. But in every ordinance you go through, I was gonna back rebel vision, or like, anywhere, it's been a lot of, any time, but you're, you're, you're governing bodies got the right to expect that. You would not apply it to the government.
But most of those towns have ordinance officers that actually do that, not just somebody that doesn't know anything.
You, but, but this, the ordinance.
But I'm just saying, I won't be approving anybody to come onto my property like that.
Well, then I would suggest that you look around the town.
Well, I'm just telling you, this, this part here.
Well, Barbara, what you gotta understand is, is the governing body has got the right to vote for this. We've got, what are we gonna do when you have a water mandate, and you're not helping us with the real place?
Well, nothing on my property is part of town.
The meter pit.
Well, the meter pit, that's on the sidewalk. That's not in, in the fenced area.
But as we talked, at the first time, when we decided to let you go away, is, is it was brought up that point.
No.
That, you know, you know what I said, so what are you saying? No point.
Go ahead.
All right. It was, it was, you?
I wasn't talking to you. Or about you.
Huh?
I wasn't talking about you.
I didn't say you what?
Well, you threw your paper down.
No, no, I was, I was trying to make conversation. I couldn't get over your hand, which is.
Go ahead.
So anyhow, what I was going to say is, we even, we said you could have the goats get the perimeters that we have been got.
These perimeters you have written down right now are not the exact same as that when we, the very first time.
No, but I've got the, I've got the exact one right here that I read off that I didn't, that I hear it again.
Well, the, the, the uh, part about coming onto my property was never, ever mentioned on the very first meeting.
You got this paper.
That was the second meeting.
This was the paper that you, you got.
That was the second meeting, not the first meeting. And that's when I asked why, when that, how that was gonna work. And that's when the mayor and Judy said, you agreed to it last meeting, but it was never brought up to the last meeting.
We're, we're not gonna argue. We're, we're, go ahead, yeah. Uh, because I read right out this paper. The first time we moved, we had, and, and it says right in here, and, and the, the office got these all this.
Do you still have that paper with you? Okay. But the paper I have is totally different than that one.
You know, the thing that I don't understand, you know, we said, well, you said rules, you ran an administration. Why is it there's certain people that feel they don't have to abide the rules? Um.
Well, that is, that is true.
The rules are right here in this ordinance. Why do you feel that you can be above it? It's just like, oh, what are your chickens? It says right in the chicken ordinance, your chickens are not to be out of your coop. It says that you guys made those.
I didn't make that ordinance. That was never done.
That year, it was while you guys not in there, right? I don't know this, it's a little hard.
That was not done, oh, it's.
Why can't everybody go by the rules when they've been set? And you have your goats running around, you have your chickens running around, and if somebody else is gonna look at them, because I heard they were. Well, why can't we go by the rules? It's like Studi and the dogs. The dogs are not home anymore at all. They're running all over town. Why can't he go by the rules? So, we moved our truck when we got in trouble, because they could have seven hundred and fifty dollar fines for us if we parked there. Studis park in the road all the time. Why can't we go by the rules? That's all I'm asking.
So, uh, I didn't know that I couldn't freely range my animals on my own property?
They're not supposed to be out of their cages. They're other, they're, uh, cats.
Okay, well, they're not right in our, those are any.
It's, it's written right in the ordinance.
Okay, well, that is not what was put out the first meeting, is what I'm trying to think of. And I will bring the paper that was bringing, I brought out on the second meeting.
Well, we're not, we're not discussing that. We're discussing chickens, and other animals running free.
But they're not running around town?
And don't have.
They are not to be out of your cans. It says right here in the ordinance, this bar, right here.
Okay, Judy.
Well, let's ask Rita already.
Okay, no, that's fine. Okay, Judy.
And they're feeding it outside the cans too. Yes, I see you scattered them. I'm sorry.
Okay, we're good.
So, is the campground and then that house um, next campground, is that part of, you know, the city?
Yes.
She's in the city, okay. Does she still have chickens running around too?
You need to ask her. I don't know.
Well, she did have chickens beside you there, and they were running all the time too.
Well, sorry, yes, the chickens are running, but I absolutely enjoy them.
But we have rules.
Well, I didn't know that. That's why I'm just asking if that was part of the city, because if it is, then I guess somebody needs to say something, because I.
They will be notified. Barbara, it really isn't funny. We sat here and we tried.
I'm laughing at her.
No, can it. We tried to help you all the way on this. I told you the last meeting, you were the model on this. You're not a very, you're not a very good model.
You weren't even supposed to have them the next day. We okayed it that you could have them once we got the ordinances off.
That was never said that way.
Okay, it's, let me put it this way. It's gonna be enforced. If we gotta remove animals from town, I don't care whose it is, they will be removed, and I've got the methods to do it.
I have a question. If somebody who has animals, um, sheep, or chickens, or whatever, and they move out of town, and then they come back, but they have different animals, are they supposed to get approval for that?
There's both a, any, yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Any other public comments?
Just one more quick thing. There's way more people in here having animals than what you guys probably know. So, uh, maybe we could focus on some of that too.
Why are they all hid out?
I don't know. You'd have to ask them.
Why don't you give us a list of all of them?
Not gonna have them. I'm just saying, I.
And you're the one that's making the example.
Okay, any other public comments?
Can we get fly swatters at the next meeting?
We can.
What did she say?
Fly swatter.
Can we get fly swatters?
If you fly swatter, it costs sugar water. No more public comments? Lay it, did you have one?
Um, I was wondering, she mentioned that um, at the other towns, they have ordinance officers. Um, if that's a concern, would that be, like, if that's a thing, would that be something the council would be looking into, if it's a concern for the majority of people?
We got two ordinance officers sitting right there.
We can't even get dogs picked up. How are we gonna do anything? That's tough.
And, sorry, and, um, just to kind of tie it back into that, um, uh, thing earlier about being online, having ordinances in a public area, if you can see. uh, thing earlier about being online, having ordinances in a public area, if you can see where online, then, you know, people would, who have questions about chickens, about goats, or about dogs, or whatever, we'll be able to go and find those instead of having to come into town hall in the short amount of time it's open, and try to get it. And I think that would help a lot too, cause with being like, I don't know the ordinance, like, people who just move there, I don't know. And I've asked for them, but Lisa's so busy, you know, she.
We will, we will work on that. It's not gonna happen overnight, but it will be worked on. So, that being it, uh, public comments. Let's, let's adjourn the executive session at. All those in favor?
Aye.
And it's personnel issues.
Yeah, just remember with the ring system. Yeah, we're good. The chief's office and, yeah, our videotaped all the time, so. Yeah, and there's fresh, you can't even bring it, there's no answer. Well, I'm gonna, I can shut it off.
They've been giving that for twenty-five years, why do we not have to put it on the website?